We're going to get, again, Fire, Police, and Civil Defense, and Mr. Mahan discussed an ambulance purchase. We just got one. Now we need to work on the next one. It takes so long to get them here.
Yes, sir. As you know, when you order an ambulance, it takes, I think this was literally the ambulance that we have not yet taken possession of. We have it, but it's being fitted out. I signed, that was one of the first pieces of legislation I did in twenty, November of twenty-two. So that gives you a sense of the timeline. This, and Mr. Tanner, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was already budgeted for, it was already planned on, and we don't actually, I mean, we encumber the expense, but we don't actually spend the money until the ambulance arrives.
Correct.
So this was planned for, but are there any questions that I can have Tanner answer for you?
Thank you.
Do we have a timeline? Are we, I think in another one, we used some equipment from Gambier and put it into a different ambulance? Are we doing any of that?
We had the opportunity to do that, but the problem with doing that, particularly for a lift cot, was if we did that, some of the, like, the replacement equipment on that would have been out of warranty, and we were concerned that they wouldn't even make that equipment anymore. So we just went ahead and used, you know, newer equipment. And that is actually what we're waiting on, is that lift equipment for the cot to be retrofitted on, or fitted for the pneumatic. But like Mr. Mahan said, the reason that we got this contract in from Burgess, and we didn't want to sit on it, there's no sense in doing that. If we could bring it, you know, council already budgeted for this, if we could get it in, it's anywhere from twelve months to thirty-six months, and if you think that's bad, let's talk about an engine. So.
What are we talking about, like, three hundred and some thousand?
Yeah. No, it's about, it's about three hundred, I believe. Yeah.
A little bit more than three hundred.
And the, the point of ordering it now is that the sooner you order it, you can lock the price in, correct me?
You lock the price in.
So you lock the price in, and that, obviously, the prices are only going up. So we want to, we want to lock the price in as soon as we can. I intend to ask for the way of the rules and pass this on the first reading tonight, unless there's that question.
Yeah, I have, I have the contract sitting here, so.
Well, as you get older, I'm more interested in.
Yeah, yes. We can park it near your house.
All right.
That's a joke.
We're going to adjourn that committee. We're going to turn it back to Mr. Mahan to discuss Citizens Police Academy.
All right, thank you, sir. Sergeant Murda is here tonight to talk to us about Citizens Police Academy, and you all have a packet. So take it away, sir.
All right. Well, hello, everyone. I'm Nick Murda. I'm our Community Engagement Sergeant. When I took this position, one of the things Chief asked me to do is come up with a Citizens Academy. So that way, we can, we can go to the next slide. So that way, we can kind of get the community more involved. They can see what we do, how we do it, see the equipment we do, do ride-alongs, meet the officers, because, I mean, a lot of people didn't know me for a long time, because I was on Midnight for like seven years. So a lot of people, "Oh, you must be a new guy." I'm like, "No, I've been here a while." So it is going to be a four-month, twice a month, second and last Thursday, from three to six, nine, three to, sorry, six to nine P.M. It'll cover a variety of topics. We'll have snacks. I'm hoping to have polos for everybody who signs up, that first, first one, but that just depends on when the, you know, if we get them. It'll start in March thirteenth, and it'll be done June twenty-sixth, as long as everything goes smooth. Okay, next slide. So for some of the things we're going to do, you'll get to do a tour of the Police Department. You'll get to see the cruisers, because I think we currently have three different cruisers, four if you include the Bearcat and some of the ESU stuff. I'm hoping we can show that, but we'll see. You'll get to go through the department, all the different areas, see all the offices, and see some of the different things. We'll show a lot of equipment throughout it, from, like, I'll be teaching a couple classes, and one of my classes that I'll be doing is more of the, like, the subject-controlled defensive tactics, use of force, where we're going to do demonstrations on a lot of our equipment. So might get to see someone tased, get to let you use a baton on a bag, maybe do some, like, jujitsu demonstration for law enforcement, because I teach that. Should be pretty fun. You'll get to see a lot of interesting things. And then the ride-alongs, which I think you guys are already able to do those, but, next slide. Though it's geared more towards citizens, my first couple of classes, I would prefer you guys to be in them, and city officials, because I need heavy critiques. I need people who have a good insight in the city to, to tell me, "Hey, you could do this better, you can do that better." That way, I get good input, so when we start rolling it out, and we have more just citizens in it, they're getting a better product, and they're happy. And there also is no cost to the people in it, so. And then these are the topics: Police Department Tour, cruisers, Administration, Criminal Investigation, Detectives, Drug Interdiction, Traffic Enforcement, Domestic Violence, Spouses. This was something that was told to me by the Worcester Police Chief, that a lot of the classes actually really enjoyed when they had the spouses come in and talk about what's it like to be married to a cop, like, the insides, outsides. And I'm going to try to have some officers who are married to officers give their own sight, what's that like, you know? Mental health, Emergency Service Unit under ESU, and then use of force, which is more my, my field. Excellent. Then the first two classes will be selected by us, which will be hopefully mostly you guys and other officials. And then after that, I want the candidates to give me people that they think should be in the academy. That way, it gives kind of a, we're not just selecting everybody. So that way, it gives more power to everybody else to get their friends in and spread, you know, kind of what we're doing. There'll be a liability waiver, which I don't have that in there yet, I'm still working on that. There's an application, it's pretty simple, not too crazy. Prefer people not to have felonies or sexually oriented crimes. Felonies, depending on how long and what they are, we can talk about that, because there'll be a basic background check. No costs, and then we'll do a certificate, and we'll kind of get together and figure out when everyone wants to do a graduation, and we'll do a ceremony, and it'll be a good time. And then, it's hard to see, but there's the academy shirt we're looking at. It'll be a nicer polo with, it says, "Mount Vernon Police Academy," and then "Citizen" in like a dark steel gray, and then it's our badge in steel gray.
Nice.
It looks separate from our uniform. That way, people don't see it, they, "Oh, police officer." We had to make sure we did that. We don't want anyone mistaking you guys. So, any questions?
How many people do you want to have in the final group?
Ten to fifteen is my goal. I like ten, because it's a nice, small number that I can work with easy, and then fifteen, but if I get like thirty people interested, I might, I was told, "Ah, you can always tell me I need to up it more." Like, well, you know, we'll see. But fifteen's my goal, I think, down the line.
So how often would they be, they ride along, once they're in the academy, and what would they do once they're there?
So that would be kind of up to them. They can kind of ride when they want. I always suggest people who want to do ride-alongs, don't just ride on the same shift, ride at different hours, because riding at two P.M. on a Monday is a lot different than midnight on a Saturday, you know? I mean, no one wants to really get out of bed at midnight if you don't have to, but it's, it's a different variety. It's a different type of officer, it's a different, the people out and about are different. And then, and a ride-along, you'll probably, you'll have to stay in the vehicle. Usually, that's a safety, well, the officer will let you out sometimes on certain things, but like a real hot domestic and stuff like that, it's not, it's not safe to get out of the cruiser, because you're our.
For the police or the?
Yes, because essentially, you're our responsibility when you're in that car, so, I mean, if we were to have to get in a pursuit or something, we have to drop you off somewhere that's safe. We're not going to just drop you off on like the side of the road at East Gambier and, you know, Edgewood or something. No, we would make sure to take you somewhere safe. So I think dispatch will be on par with that, knowing that, okay, they're getting ready to go something, they're probably going to have to make a pit stop first.
I have to ask why the black thing on your badge?
Oh, that's a morning band for the officer that was in the crash that died.
Last week in Belleville.
In Belleville.
Last week in Belleville.
I read about that.
Yeah, that's really sad. Any other questions? So if you guys are interested and want to be in it, just, my number is, I think, yeah, my number's on there, department number's on there, just let us know, and we'll get you signed up.
So fill out the application and return it to the Police Department?
Yes.
Can we just give it to you?
Oh, yeah, you can just give it to me.
So if we, if we do want to get tased, that is possible?
I, I don't, probably not.
No.
Probably not. Rob has spoken, probably not.
No?
No.
No.
I can tell you right now, there is no need to do that.
You will get to see somebody who's been tased before, probably tased.
There's absolutely no need.
And our taser instructor, Lieutenant Lewis, is right over here. I have a feeling I'm going to be the one he probably tases. Unless we have any newer guys who need certified, that's even better. I've already been tased a couple times, so.
All right. I can tell my family, I don't have to worry about it, Amber.
Yep, and you don't have to worry about pepper spray, because I'm getting ready to go through that training next month, and I will not bring pepper spray out. Sorry, I hate pepper spray.
Thank you, Sergeant, appreciate it.
You guys have a good night.
Looking forward to it.
Yep.
I'm sorry about the tasing thing, no.
Oh, wait, 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 I really do want you. Next meeting's mine, anyway.
Did you sign your badge?
Mm-hmm.
Boy, you're good.
Yeah, we have five minutes left in the committee. I wanted to ask my counsel, I did mine yesterday, your ethics forum is due in May?
I think it's May nine, May nineteen, something like that.
Somewhere in there. It takes about five minutes. If you're already, you already did it, you can click on a button, it re-enters all the things you did last year, and it costs like thirty, thirty-five dollars or whatever, and it's done. And that, that's how to know when you're done, you've completed it. It's a simple thing to do. I just wanted to get it off my plate and get it done.
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth is due.
Yeah.
Okay. We have plenty of time, but it's no sense in delaying it forever.
Mr. Hawke, can I have the last couple of minutes of this for just a second?
Okay.
There's a piece of legislation tonight, I've got a prior engagement that I need to go to here in just a little bit. We're having some more cars put up for the Gov. Deals thing, it's a normal thing. I would normally be here to present that when it comes time for the legislation, but just letting you know that that's what, these are more cars that we're cleaning our impound out and moving them down the road, so.
Any great cars we want to bid on?
Not really.
Okay.
But if you do, you can get on Gov. Deals, and you can bid on them just like anybody else can.
Okay.
And, uh.
You guys usually downplay them and say how bad they are.
Well, we don't try to sugarcoat what we're, what we're getting rid of.
We sell them as-is.
As-is, where-is, and, in the condition that they are in. So we've had some pretty bad ones go for pretty high, and we've had some decent ones go for pretty cheap, so it all balances out.
Okay.
And Sergeant Murda's put a lot of work into this Citizens Police Academy, and I think it's going to be a really good thing, and I'm really proud of the work he's doing with the, with the Community Engagement Office, too, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's go ahead to the Land Use and Development Committee with Mrs. Keener to discuss the rezoning of Zero South Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is up for its third reading this evening, which we will need to.
Continue to a date certain.
Do we postpone?
Postpone to a date.
To a date. So we postpone it to February twenty-fourth, because we already have a public hearing on it. But the Law Director has been digging into this and has some guidance for us, which will help the direction that we are going. So take it away.
I have not found any case law or anything else helpful specifically in regards to this issue, where we had municipal planning, which has five members, but only four showed up, but they still had a quorum, and they voted two to two. So there is not a recommendation from, from municipal planning. In other cases, such as like if BZA has something that comes before it, but no one makes a motion to, to do anything, and it dies, if someone attempted to, and someone then said, "Well, they've effectively denied it," and then attempted to appeal that matter, the courts have said that in that case, you can't appeal because no decision was actually made. And following along those lines of cases, that seems to be the closest fact pattern that I can find to what happened here, where they voted two to two, and it was a tie, and therefore, there was no recommendation made to council. Following along with that, the courts then would go and return the case or the controversy to the original body where it started, in this case, Municipal Court. Given all of the unknowables and the, and the lack of any guidance on this, I believe that it is the best case for council to move, to return this to Municipal Planning, to have them get five people and get you a decision one way or the other, and then it would, it would go on the normal way, so.
How many citizens were at the original Planning Commission?
Two.
And which side were they on?
They, yes.
One for, one against.
And the mayor and the Safety Service Director ended up on opposite sides of the decision, and so, yeah. Question, was, was the motion to approve it, or was the motion to deny it?
The motion was to approve it, I believe.
Yeah.
It was in the affirmative.
But they, but it did not carry, so there was no recommendation either way. I, I believe we need to send this back to Municipal Planning. Now, what is the hard thing is, will, do we know that they will have at least five voting members that meeting? We will make sure that we get five people, and if we don't, if we aren't going to have five, then we'll continue it to the next date to make sure that we, if we have to drive them here, we'll find five of the seven voting members. And then just to confirm, so if they do pass it and bring it back here? Well, if they, it's going to come back to you no matter what. Right. The question becomes, is there a recommendation to adopt it? Yeah. Or a recommendation not to adopt it?
And they make a recommendation to adopt it, it takes six, the seven of us to turn it down.
Mm-hmm.
And if they bring a recommendation to not adopt it, it also takes six.
Six people.
To overturn that.
To overturn it.
Versus just making the decision now.
Yeah.
And if we make the deci, sorry, and if we make the decision now, you think that could be?
I certainly, it will be, it will be a case of what they call first impression, because I cannot find, and I've been unable to through other sources, to find a case like this. So that's why I ended up branching the research out to similar types of cases, because lawyers, when they don't have something exactly on point, you know, you reason by analogy. And so that's the closest that I could find.
Jay?
So in the interest of resolving this for the applicant as soon as possible, we've advertised a public meeting. Do we still need to have that public meeting, or if we send it back, do we no longer, does that public meeting essentially get delayed until it comes back to council?
Well, we have a public meeting already, and so you need to hold a public meeting and then make a decision one way or the other, either to go forward or not to go forward.
Okay. Given that we're sending it back to Municipal Planning.
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe. We don't know what you're going to do yet.
Oh, that's true. Making an assumption.
Let's clarify that question. So if tonight we decided to send it back, do we still need the public hearing? Can you cancel a public hearing?
Yeah, we can cancel the public hearing.
Schedule. So is, is that an option you want to consider, Chairman?
I, I think that it is the general will that I have heard from council to send this back. I personally would like to just vote on it, but I am hearing that council would like to send this back, get a recommendation up or down, so that we have ourselves covered. I don't think Rob would like to be the first city to experience what could come of us, you know, creating precedent.
So my question then is, why not act on it tonight to send it back and cancel the meeting, cancel the hearing?
Well, I, that's why we're having this, so that I can get the wish of council, and I have talked with John individually, and he expressed that that was his wish. Mel has just, but we also can't vote right now, so.
I understand.
I am willing to bring it to the floor, if that is what people want, but we can't say that we want it.
So I read the very detailed minutes, which Ms. Blankenhorn writes extremely detailed minutes.
Yeah, they're good.
Every word, pretty much. But it's been, it's been two or three or four weeks ago since I read those. So I, personally, I'm not comfortable for me making a decision tonight, and I think I would really like to see it go back, to see a more, a resolution from MPC, and then to come back to us, and either go to the meeting, which I will try, or reread the minutes very carefully before I would want to vote.
There is a video of it as well, so that does help.
So are you opposed to acting tonight to send it back?
I.
Or you would rather have a hearing?
No, I would rather send it back, personally.
I, I think that's, I haven't heard a single person, other than myself, who doesn't want to send it back, so.
I would prefer to vote on it tonight, but we can vote to send it back. I mean, that's only two, that's only two, so if everyone else is, if we get outvoted to send it back, that's the way that's.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring it to a vote. If it doesn't get voted to send it back, then we'll go on and have a hearing, so.
So, Rob, let's, let's just play out the scenario. Let's say we vote on it tonight, and we vote it down. You're saying you doesn't, you don't think that will stand.
I don't know.
They cannot vote on it tonight.
Well, no, you, you.
Yeah, we can't.
Well, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
But we could, we could take it to the hearing and vote on it.
Right.
And having not gotten a recommendation from them.
Mm-hmm.
We're kind of putting us out on a limb, because we're not voting yes or no on something they sent here.
Yes.
You're voting on it one way or the other.
So why'd they send it?
Because at that point, they vote on things, it was completed down there, we hadn't really, we've never run across this before, and so you take a matter, it gets voted on, and then it comes up to council. That's just the normal way of things. It was only once we got up here, and we've been talking about it, and we sort of recognized the unique position that what happened put us in, that I've done a lot more reading and research, and I think that council members have had the opportunity to think a lot and pretty hard about it.
So if we send it back, does the whole process start over? Timelines and everything?
They will have to, they will do another meeting, and they'll advertise it, send notices.
Okay.
And we will make sure, if we have to drive them ourselves, that we have at least five members up here to.
Okay.
So I think she's, so it starts all over again for them also.
Yes.
It is more judicious for this process if you send it back tonight, as opposed to waiting for a hearing to then just send it back.
Yes, that I agree with.
I think that would be good for the applicant to not have to wait for that whole process.
From what I'm hearing, with the exception of Mike and Amber, that you would rather vote on it, period, but you would still have to wait after the hearing to do that.
Correct.
You can all just remand it back to MPC and let the process start tonight.
Well, and I'm going to be clear, I'd rather vote on it tonight, too, but it sounds, hey, we can't.
Right.
And it sounds like it's going to end up going back anyways.
Correct.
Well, it, it is, I mean, what could happen is if council waited till next meeting, decided to vote on it, voted it down.
Technically.
What?
Which is quicker, technically.
Which is quicker, but, but here.
I'm not biased.
But, but it could go up to the appellate court. The appellate court could say, "Hoy, bro, and you gave them really crappy advice, and we're going to send it all the way back to Municipal Planning," and that'll be six or nine months down the road, and then we start all over again. Okay. So does it just take a simple majority of us tonight to send it back?
Yes.
Yes.
So I think I get the feel of where we're at.
Okay, we're going to adjourn your committee.
Thank you. Take it away.
And we're going to move now to Employing Community Relations with Mrs. Woods, discuss the City Inspector and Communications Director, various pay grades.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go down the list of questions I've received. I'm sure there's others, and we'll just discuss, okay? So we're discussing three pieces of ordinance tonight.
If you don't mind, can we throw the fourth one in? I know it's a brand-new one, but it kind of fits with the rest of them, so I'll try to be brief. It's the last one, it's of seven.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
All right, so the first one is City Inspector.
Okay.
So here's the questions I've gotten, and if you guys want to throw more in.
Okay.
Since we don't have code, what will they be inspecting?
All right.
Is this the transitioning of what we used to have as a part-time position to full-time? And someone asked, is this for the Engineering Department specifically, or is this growing up?
Yeah.
Do you want me to keep going positions, or you want to address that first?
Yeah, I'll hit those.
Okay.
So we do have, so there are, you know, buckets of codes, if you will. We have property maintenance codes, we have zoning codes, and then we have, well, we do not have building codes. So I think when people say, "We don't have codes," what they're referring to is building codes.
Right.
All right, so we 100% do have zoning codes, and essentially, the Safety Service Director is the zoning enforcement officer. We've talked about that, I think, with the last budget, and we even appropriated money for that, and we just never got around to hiring that individual. We're missing the boat. Actually, there is a piece of legislation where you do have a recommendation not to do something, and that would really be handled, and actually, we had a rather tense back-and-forth with that individual, because it was a procedural issue, because we don't have somebody that handles that, you know, directly. And I think that causes both confusion for citizens, and that causes issues for the city when we have, you know, utility easements and whatnot. So there's that on the zoning side. And then we also, as we, I look over at our Utilities Director and his A.D.s, we're starting to implement things like our fog and backflow systems in the utility, and there's a lot of administrative stuff on that side. So if you look at the city's, city inspector's side of things, you know, this is, I'll be totally open and honest about this, this is the first step toward a, you know, a Building and Zoning Department, you know, Director. Are we planning on launching some building codes? Absolutely not. But this would be the first, you know, development in that direction, as we have a Property Maintenance Code Enforcement Officer, which would, we would change that position to Assistant City Inspector. This, that individual, which is Greg B. Miller, would fall under the City Inspector, and this, the City Inspector would work under the Safety Service Office, and the costs would be split between the General Fund, which is where we'd fund the zoning enforcement officer, and a portion of that would come from the utilities.
So I think that was the third question.
Yeah.
Was basically who are they reporting to, and that would be you.
Yeah, so they report to me, and they work in tandem with both engineering and utilities, maybe with Public Works, but mostly in that service area. Any questions on that?
Other questions around that one?
Yeah.
I keep driving down the street, and I follow electricians that have license number, etc. If we don't have a building code, does that mean anything in Mount Vernon?
Yes, but that is also, that's its whole other bag of, bag of bones, but that's separate from the City Inspector. I think when you create a City Inspector's position and you open the door for that, there's a real opportunity, and we're creating the, you know, foundation for that, but that is something that this administration is not putting forward right now, and something that another council, probably not you guys, are willing to touch right now. So yes, you are correct. Yes, very hot topic. And you have very passionate opinions, both one way or the other, that you can appreciate.
And this is been budgeted?
Yes, yes.
All right, so the next one was Communications Director. The only question I got was, when would this change become effective? I know we have to pass, but is there like a date?
Immediately. So let me explain some of the duties. Essentially, what we would do, another exempt employee, the proposal in front of you is essentially to defund the mayor's assistant position, and then just kind of transition that position over to the Communications Director, including the current employee, due to considering current qualifications. What would happen to the mayor's... The duties of the mayor's assistant is we feel after the communication... Or the conversations that went into the creation of the Communications Director between the mayor's assistant and the Safety Service Director's administrative assistant, that those positions or the duties in those positions can kind of be merged into one super mega executive assistant or something, title TBD.
And now that I think about it, I did have another question. So part of Todd's current role is to support us, so what happens there?
Sure. So that maintains itself, but I will say, yeah, for now. Part of the conversation is, you know, let's imagine a world where there is an incredibly... This is totally hypothetical, but a, you know, hostile council and a hostile mayor. You really... Situation, you really put that position in a very odd spot. And if you look at council's budget, there is no budget for a council clerk. Most cities, and I'm not encouraging you to create this position, but most cities do have a city clerk position that becomes the Chief Information Officer, that clerks council meetings, clerks other... BZA, MPC, those kind of... And I'm not saying that we need to create that, but we do kind of need to... I think it would be smart, moving forward, to kind of consider, you know, a supplemental appropriation within... Or a supplemental line within the appropriations for council for a clerk, in the same way that we do for security for the police. And then tack that on to whatever else. So that's a working conversation that needs to happen. Right now, nothing changes. It's still the same financial arrangement, same salary. You'll notice nothing different as far as the way the financial operations go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Salary, you say the salary's a little higher because it's an exempt.
Yeah, but it's what we communicated throughout the budget process.
So was the mayor's assistant portion of the salary the same amount that is listed here?
When you consider overtime, yeah.
Okay.
So...
So the salary wasn't the same?
But that's what you're saying, it'll be exemptable.
It's going to be a wash in the end, because it's a salary, not an hour.
Okay.
All right.
All right, onward.
So then on to 2506.
Yes.
Those are just reevaluated pay grades. So essentially, what we do is we take the job description. We evaluate them the same way that we've done with every other exempt position, or a position that's supervisory or professional personnel that's out of a CBA, you know what I mean when I say that. There are four that we need to... That we needed to look at. So when we reorganized the utility, one of those was the Assistant Director of Plant Maintenance. We have not filled that position, but in the interim, we have evaluated it. So it does exist. Council created that position, it's just not filled. So we took the time to go ahead. We have budgeted to fill that position. It's... But now we've evaluated it, like we've done with everything else. And when I say we evaluated it, what I mean is we take the job description. We give it to Clemens Nelson, that's who we use as our official evaluator. We want to use a third party. That way, we're not, you know, we can't be accused of, you know, having a special interest in any of that. So that's one. The Fire Marshal, when you approved that job description recently after the... In negotiations with IFF, we took that out of the union, and that became part of the supervisory personnel at the Fire Department. We used a placeholder pay grade for that, that we internally evaluated, just to get that legislation moving. But... And pretty much taking the same salary that that individual is currently making. But we wanted to make sure that that was actually graded correctly. However, the reason I want you to hold on 2506 tonight, and I'm not asking you to do anything with this one, just let it go for another reading, is because this one, the Fire Marshal and the First Deputy Auditor, which we created last year, need to be reevaluated. Their final job descriptions don't include an accurate picture of like supervisory and minimum qualifications and things like that. So we need to have those formally reevaluated. And then, of course, the Administrative Chief Deputy Clerk of Courts, Lisa Mazza, contacted us and said that this position existed in their hierarchy, and we never evaluated it. So that was just one of those that we missed.
And you don't need to answer this tonight, but the question was... Well, the question I got was, when did these salaries last change? And I know some of them are new positions, but specifically like Fire Marshal. So I know that one's going to be tougher to do.
Yeah, the Fire Marshal was simply... That one's kind of easy. It was in the CBA before, and it followed CBA steps, and now it's not.
Okay, and then will any duties change? But you just kind of answered, you need to reevaluate. Okay, all right. And then you want to talk about '07, temporary?
Yeah, 2507 is basically... So a good example of this is we posted for leaf acres last year at $13 an hour, and Facebook laughed at us, and when I said laughed at us, I mean, they literally laughed at us. And we've got zero applicants. The county is kind of stepping this up. We need to pay our seasonals more money. I know you look at it and you think minimum... And we, if you notice, we basically took all of the departments in the past, we'd put, you know, this department can make this. And we even talked about part-time fire, and we talked about, you don't need to do that. It's kind of implicitly implied, right, throughout this? And this includes, because we... I'm going to try to keep this brief, but we have reevaluated everything. We have... All of these things mean different things. We have interns that work here. That means they should obtain some sort of college credit or be enrolled in something like that. We have temporary employees, we have seasonal employees, we have part-time employees. All of those things by the federal government, that means something. So we've included all of that, the same way that we've done with pay grading. We've said you have a minimum salary, and you have a ma... Or not salary, but you have a minimum rate and you have a maximum rate. You gave them a budget, and they have to fit within that budget. And if you have a returning person that knows what they're doing, and you feel that $20 an hour is appropriate, or you've just got some, you know, kid that's fresh out of high school, and you think that 15's good enough, then you give them the 15, or you give them the 20. But if you council gave them... I'm thinking of like the Parks Department, or PB&L, or Cemetery. If you give them $38,000 for part-time employment over the summer, if you pay everybody $20 an hour, and it, you know, you have them... If you got 20 employees and you pay them $20 an hour, and it runs out in two weeks, well, sorry, Tom. Looks like you're cutting the grass. So it's just kind of the discretion of the department head. I felt comfortable doing that, because I trust my department heads and their ADs to run the thing, and hopefully you do too. The reason I would ask you to include this in the conversation is as we move forward with this, and even now in February, we're going to have to start implementing this and planning so we can start hiring some folks.
And we talked about this, I think, during the budget.
We did.
About having this much money, it doesn't really matter what they pay them.
Right.
As long as you've got somebody that's working, then you get applicants.
Yeah, the money's the money.
And the other thing is this, that the department cannot create their own positions. They can only fund the positions that council has already created. So they can't decide then they're going to add, you know, a bunch of new interns, or seasonal, or whatever. It's only what council has authorized that type of job.
So it's fairly arbitrary on where they fall on that scale.
Well, no.
And if I'm applying, and I know I could be getting 20, but I'm getting 18...
Well, no, it's not arbitrary, because we use the same process to determine these wages that we do everyone else's wages on a salary scale. You know, for people who work under the Safety Service Director and then the mayor's purview, they have to work with HR to set the salaries for the individual employees for the positions that council has authorized. When they're into... When they're in, such as my summer legal assistant, you know, I will get to set that salary with HR's assistance. So it's the same way we set salaries for every other position in the city.
And we've had several folks, you know, in the rigid system that we have now, we've had several folks that have worked with us for literally summer after summer after summer. And frankly, it's just not fair to have those repeat, you know, folks that we can count on every year to come in and make exactly the same... I think we give them like a quarter more, or 50 cents more, or something like that. You know, thanks for years of service, here's 50 cents more. Oh, by the way, this guy that, you know, just came off the street, is going to make this too. So I think having that, you know, it's almost like a retention, you know, system where we can keep folks coming back. And also, it does, you know, shift that whole scale up to attract folks. Because right now, we literally, you know, we had complaints that the leaf season took long to get... You know, "Were you coming to get my leaves?" Well, our entire crew had to go out and do it themselves. And then we had some winter events where we had to take the VAC off and then put the... So... We need help, and the best way to do that is to attract people with a, you know, better pay system, so...
Okay, I've gone way over my time.
You are. You're penalized for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to adjourn the Employing Community Relations. We're going to move now to Utilities with Ms. Ruckman to discuss the WPCLF.
As a result of that, I will try to have it wrapped up by 7:29, guys. We need to keep it pretty tight. This is having to do with Resolution Number 2025-02, which is the WPCLF. This is just... I got some questions after the last committee meeting, so I wanted to be sure to specify that while this is about us applying to the Water Pollution Control Funds, which is done by the Ohio EPA, and gives basically some low-interest loans, principal forgiveness, things of that nature for water and wastewater plants, I believe.
That's correct.
That's what the legislation this evening is focusing on. We are trying to get the project in front of the public and council as much as we possibly can, because I don't want anyone to say that this came out of nowhere and blindsided us. So that's why we're talking about some of that this evening, but also focusing on the project that it is related to. And just that's why we're doing that. Like I said, we want to be transparent, want to have that out there in the open. And I would also let everybody on council know that while this is one facet of what it is that we're voting for, for that project, it is by no means a blank check to, you know, we're not breaking ground after this vote. We have a number of votes after this that would have to happen in the affirmative before we would carry on and actually break ground, so... Gentlemen?
Good evening. I'm Joe Jacobs with Arcatus. Apologize for running over last time. I promised to be brief. So I'm going to just give a real brief overview of what we presented at the last council meeting, just as a refresher. We go to first slide. So, you know, this is at the wastewater treatment plant. You know, many of the existing structures at the wastewater plant have not been upgraded since the... They're 1970s and the early 19... Or late 1990s. And so this project is really intended to address a lot of the facilities that have aged and have deteriorated over time and are in need of upgrade. So we'll go to the next slide. So some of the key drivers for this project are, you know, primarily is to protect the Coates River. The Coates River is designated as a scenic river. It has exceptional warm water habitat, and we want to maintain that status of the river by making sure that the effluent quality from the plant is at its best treated capability. The other part of it, too, is that EPA is looking to put a phosphorus limit on the discharge of the plant. And so some improvements are needed to be able to take the phosphorus out and make sure we're in compliance with our effluent limits being discharged to the river. And then the other key project driver, as I mentioned earlier, is to address aging infrastructure. Again, many of the facilities that are out there have not been touched since the late 1990s, and some not even since the 1970s. And those portions of the plant are really needed to be modified and upgraded to be able to maintain compliance and a successful operation at the plant. Did you want to talk a little bit about some of the condition issues?
This is kind of the dollar figure we're going to spend on each aspect of the plant. If you could back up a couple of slides.
Just one slide.
Okay, so here's the outline. Preliminary treatment would be the green to the left of the screen, the little square box. That'll be our fine screens. We're going to re-up those. They've been 15 years, and they're at the end of their life. Primary treatment would include your red, the square boxes there. It would be your primary settling and your grit removal. There again, those are original back to the 50s. The secondary treatment would be $11 million approximately. Those are the green circles with the red circles in the middle. Those are the big basins, if you've ever been out there. Basically, just your clarifiers with the oxidation around the outside. Disinfection, that's the little yellow building clear to the right there in the middle. That's our decor building, and then the bigger yellow one to the left is where we keep our chlorine and whatnot. It's time for that to be upgraded. It's all 1970s. We actually had a site tube break this week, and we called around, found one out in Indiana. It was 1976. The guy says, "Actually, we have one on the shelf." So we're getting that shipped in to keep that going, so... The solids thickening, that would be the big yellow, or is that the... That'd be the green?
Well, I think it's above the chlorine, so it's kind of the same block.
Yeah, that's where we have a thickening belt up there, where we take the sludge from the secondary and thicken it down to a more... Get rid of the water, make it easier to put on the fields. The anaerobic digestion, that's the yellow, kind of the three circles with the square in the middle. That's all 1950s and 70s, so that all needs upgraded. The solids de-watering, that's where we were talking about the cake and the bio salads and the patties there last time. That'll be kind of where the numbers are, the 72 through 12 there. That'll be where we have the red refan press, where we can stockpile our cake. And then miscellaneous, it'd be more for air handling, handrails, and things to that nature to bring it up the code. Let me turn back over to you.
So as we mentioned last time, the total cost estimated at this point is about $45 million for construction of all those improvements. And, you know, there's a number of, you know, things that we're going to be looking at to be able to try to fund the work. I think the primary device to be able to fund the work is the WPCLF program. It's basically a low-interest loan program, and they do offer some discounts on the interest rate, which can be a big savings from a total cost standpoint to the city. They offer discounts for regionalization, for nutrient removals, which is a primary goal of this project, and some other things. And we'll be pursuing that to try to get the best interest rate possible to fund the loan.
But it's more of a loan than a grant?
It is a loan. It is a loan. You have to pay... They have to pay the loan back. But they offer discounts on the interest rate, you know, for the loan. So, you know, if you go out for a bond for 4%, you know, the WPCLF program, you know, can offer discounts to that to get you, you know, to 3% or 2.5%, depending on what the discounts are. And that can be a lot of money over a 20-year period of time for the amount of money that we're looking at. So it's a really popular program. There's a lot of communities that rely on this type of a program to fund their work. And it's really a good program, and EPA is really good to work with in administering. There are some other smaller grants and loans that might be available out there that we will pursue. It's hard to guarantee, you know, that we can get any of those grants or those loans, because they are very competitive. But we are going to be very aggressive as we move forward, try to get as many grants and loans as... Or, you know, grants to help fund and take some of the burden off the ratepayers. But a lot of that work, I think, still needs to be done. You know, we're going to be doing a rate study here very shortly to try to get a better handle on some of the finances and, you know, how we can fund this project. For just a kind of comparison, you know, I had mentioned last time, you know, you're not the only ones that are in this boat. You know, there's a lot of smaller and mid-sized communities in Ohio that are going through the very same process that you guys are now. You know, they have not done any upgrades to their plants in a number of years, and now, all of a sudden, you know, they're faced with, you know, having to do a major upgrade. And just, you know, we've got a list here of different communities and what they're spending or have been spending here lately, to kind of give you a feel for where you guys stand with respect to other communities of your size. And you kind of see that, you know, there's a mix, but you're, you know... The amount of money that needs to be spent here is kind of in line with what other folks are spending, so...
Just to clarify, the MGD is a million gallons a day, is kind of what the plant is the capacity of.
Yeah, yeah. So the last slide here really talks about the schedule here. And what we're looking for tonight is basically a resolution to... For approval to enter into a loan agreement with Ohio EPA, basically the WPCLF, a Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. And I think tonight's resolution is really only for design and to be... And I think tonight's resolution is really only for design and to be able to retain a construction manager. So once that, once that resolution passes, then Brian and his staff will be able to proceed with, working with Ohio EPA to obtain that design loan and bring a construction manager onboard. The construction manager will help with, you know, determining a final maximum guaranteed price for the construction work and provide some value engineering to look for ways to save costs and maybe do things a little bit better. So it's basically trying to get an outside opinion on, on the project as we move forward. So once the resolution is passed, we'll enter into, we'll send out an RFQ for the construction manager, we'll retain the construction manager, and then we'll finish the design. There will be another resolution that will come about once we have a guaranteed maximum price from the construction manager to enter into a construction contract to be able to construct the facility. So there, there will be other opportunities to, to vote on the project. And then, you know, we're, we're looking to wrap up the design this year, hopefully try to get the, the construction loan in December of this year, and then January of next year, we're looking to start construction. And then construction is anticipated to take about 30 months, so we should be done roughly around, you know, summer 2028. That's kind of where we're looking for from a schedule standpoint. So that was my brief recap. Hopefully I didn't gloss over things too quickly, but if you have questions, we're here to help facilitate moving the project forward if we can.
And to kind of build off what Eric was saying, once we get the CMAR, the construction company hired, we will come back in front of you for approval. We kind of did all that with the CMAR legislation last month, so.
So one question that I know the city council will get is when we are putting forward this much funding towards our wastewater or our water facility, what are we looking at to answer the question of what is going on with clothing discoloration? And please, nobody tell me that it's the lotion on our clothes. I had asked Brian to create a heat map of complaints that were coming in, and I would like to know if that has happened, if there are certain spaces in the community where we're seeing more of that. I think we need to know, and I am all for the work that we need to do here. I think it's very important. I've toured that facility, and it is frightening to know that, you know, the five-gallon bucket and zip tie is what our toilets flushing is depending on. But at the same time, people in the community really do want to know why our clothes are being bleached, not necessarily, but stained. And I will say that if you put a filter on your, your incoming water, it helps, but that should not be where the city is at. So I'm sure that you will continue to work on that, but I would like to see if we've got that heat map going on and where we're at.
We're looking into it, and it seems like there's no particular area showing up. It's kind of all over the city.
I will say on that front, I got told that there was probably something on the inside of my walls, i.e. plumbing, that had to do with that, and I thought that they were full of baloney, but we actually did change some stuff out and got a new washer and dryer, and we have not actually had any staining since. So, and I'm not, I know it's not a one-size-fits-all solution, but I, I will say I did not believe that, and, and when we did actually get that, I found that it actually disappeared entirely as a problem in my house. So just to add to the confusion.
Well, that is just a question that I know will come forward, and if we have a heat map, even if it doesn't show conclusively anything, I would like an update on that.
Yeah, I'll check with Brian and see what we are on that.
That, that's on the clean water side?
It is, and I know that that's completely separate, but to the...
It would be stained on the side.
Yes, to the general public. It's, water is water is water, so I know that it's still in the wheelhouse.
So we talked after the last meeting. So in 2021, we basically approved this, a smaller version of this for $14 million. And at the time, the city auditor said we had some debt rolling off that would pay for that. So my question is probably threefold here. How in the world, over four years, did this grow? Well, first of all, why, why we didn't do the project then? That was $14 million. Now, four years later, it's grown to $45 million. And, you know, I told you, I, I just want to know, I understand if we had debt that rolled off that would pay a third of this. How are we going to pay for the other two, two-thirds? And to hear that we're going to do a, you know, a look...
Rate study?
Yeah, a rate, look at a rate study tells me we're going to have to up rates to pay for this. And, and I love the fact we can get low-interest loans, like low-interest rate loans. That's great. You still have to pay the principal back. And I'm, I'm just sitting here wondering, how in the world are we going to do that? That's a lot of money.
And that's going to, I'm kind of looking at it as like a toolbox. If we pass this resolution, we'll have this funding that we could go to, that goes in our toolbox. We'll have the rate study that Arcadis is going to do. That's another tool in our toolbox.
Well, you're saying this is a, a funding mechanism, but it's a loan. So if we pass this, we're, we're putting, you know, council's saying, go ahead and go try to get this loan, but we don't have...
This only puts us on a list to be eligible for that loan. We could, this, we have no obligation to take this loan out or anything. We could, we could use it or we could not, depending, depending on how our funding works out.
Let's take it back to her question. Take an arbitrary number, let's say 3%. And at $45 million times the wastewater cost to go out there, what's it going to cost to pay the principal and the 3% on $45 million?
If we, if we go $45 million at 0% for 20 years, right now we have 7,209 active wastewater accounts. It would be $26.01 a month additional on everyone's bill.
That's the number of people going to want to know.
And that's, that's where we come in as administration. We have to figure out how to bring that number down.
To be clear, that's not what we're, we're not proposing to put that on everybody's bill.
That's, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I know that is a useful piece of information to have, but to be clear, that is not the proposal. So if, if I'll jump in here, to cut through everything, the crap, if you will. Yeah. That's, that was once, yeah. Maybe the first time that's ever been said from up here.
Somebody say taser anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Mrs. Woods is asking, where's the revenue going to come from, right? There are plenty of opportunities to lower the interest rates, funding mechanisms there, but we're going to have to dig through, and the rate study's going to be a big way to do that. There are opportunities with grants, both on the state level and on the federal level to cut that out, but that's not $45 million worth, right? And it's over the course of, you know, X amount of years, and it really depends on, you know, the bond rating, it depends on the bond terms, it depends on the loan terms, on how you structure that.
Yes.
We are working on, you know, solutions to the revenue, and I think coming up, we're between the, the rate study and some other contracts. I think that we're going to have a, a solution for you when we're just not ready to roll that out yet. But when we get closer to being able to roll out the CMAR, when we are closer to, you know, executing some of these things, when, let's just put it this way, when we're ready to ask you to put pen to paper, so to say...
We'll have numbers for it.
We're going to have those answers for you, and we will not put you in a position to either go in blindly or to say, well, it looks like everybody's paying $26.05 a month or whatnot.
Not based on choice we have, the price isn't going to go down if we wait in there.
Yeah, but, and to, and to Mrs. Woods' comment, you know, obviously the scope has gone up. That's been the biggest contributing factor.
Obviously.
Yeah, the scope has, scope has gone up considerably. But also, you know, construction costs have gone up, and we're competing, especially in central Ohio, I think that's what, even when we talk about, you know, building projects or, you know, bidding, you know, it was important for us even to get our budget out early because we're competing with other bids and things like that with other construction companies and whatnot. So it's just important for people to know that, you know, sitting around and going, wow, that's expensive, see in three years. It's not like, there was a carpet company from down home that always said the costs are going to go up and the kids are going to grow up. Like, that's where we are, so.
Mr. Chair, if I can also add to that just real quick. This is all, the numbers that you were, that we shared with are based on no growth at all.
Right.
So we have some growth that's coming.
Yes.
That will be customers, new customers. We also have, some of those customers will be paying an additional millage on top of that for the NCA, the New Community Authority, which will pay for some of that infrastructure upfront at the site, and then for some of these other things in addition to the, the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. So there, we're, like what Safety Service Director said, we're trying to bring that number down as much as possible, but it's an unfunded mandate at the end of the day. We're, we're under orders to do it.
That's also a comment that's out there, is that growth currently coming in is overtaxing our utility, and we can't handle all that. In fact, it's quite the opposite. The more customers that we have, you see that number shrink. So we can absolutely utilize more folks paying into the pot.
So I made the comment at our last meeting that, I'd made the comment at the last meeting that I remembered us, you know, having in 2021. I remember because I sat, I was in your committee. But why didn't we do it then? Because somebody asked me that. Why didn't we do it then when it was cheaper and it was approved? And, I mean, I understand why it had come back. It's gone to $45 million. They weren't going to accept what we passed for 14.
Yeah. We did have bond, you know, bond debt roll off and look to the auditor. We've been looking at that. Several of those have matured since then, but I, you know, I point to some of these buildings, too. When money was as cheap as it ever was, we could have executed then, but shoulda, woulda, coulda, I guess, is not a sufficient answer, but it is one.
All right. So this resolution will be, because, you know, I get into the word, accept and enter into a Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. So this is just talking about a CMAR and the ability to apply for the loan. It has to come back to accept a loan.
It's, it's not even the CMAR. It's not even the CMAR.
This is just getting us to that next step.
It's a, it's a state-operated loan fund that we need to enter into, and then once we enter into that, we will have the, we will need to adopt the CMAR even. So there are a multitude of steps before we're even shoveling the grain.
That comes back to us again.
Yep.
We're not giving you permission to say, yes, we'll take the $45 million.
Unfortunately, no, Mike.
But then the, the other part of that is, is I think about this because it's a big project, and with other city projects in the planning and thinking about.
I don't know what you're referring to. What are you talking about?
That, that would be bleep.
Yeah.
From reading a very well-written Moxpages article last week or the week before about debt ratios that cities can have under state statute.
Sure.
How does this affect us? Because...
It doesn't.
That's my question.
It's because this, the repayment fund for this comes from an enterprise account, and it does not count against the city's total debt ratio that you were talking about there.
Okay.
We can do 5.5% of total inside millage evaluated from what the county does.
Right.
Unvoted, 10.5% voted.
Yes.
But that, so think, you know, taxpayers versus customers. While that does contribute to the overall, you know...
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to say evaluation, it does not add up.
Right, so this doesn't, you're saying this does not, it does not apply to that state mandate.
Yep.
This just comes into the decision part of what...
And that's bonding as well.
Bond rating and things like that.
And we're talking about loans, too. So the bonding and the loans are, are even a separate enterprise here.
So like this, this loan doesn't count?
No.
Okay. That was my question.
It's because the repayment mechanism comes from an enterprise account, the people, the customers, as Tanner said, for that.
Okay.
At the risk of going over again by a significant margin, does anybody else have any questions? Not about the project as a whole, but about the resolution for this evening? I know we have that, like I said, I, you know, plan on having a lot more discussion surrounding this, and the whole reason that we're having this discussion at the scope that we are is because we want, you know, we want to be fair and transparent to everybody, and, but this evening's resolution is just about entering into the Water Pollution Control Fund, so.
And this is up for third reading tonight, so it's up for a vote?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, so.
Okay. We're going to adjourn that committee meeting. We're going to be in recess for seven minutes until we begin the legislative portion of the meeting.
Seven minutes? Seven minutes?
As elected officials, your job is to make policy decisions. But it also comes with the careful and responsible management of our city. You are the stewards of the legacy and heritage of our city. Interestingly enough, the front of this brochure has a picture of the Curtis Mansion's front door and is about Mount Vernon's legacy of American architecture. This material was actually developed with the help of James P. Buckwald. Obviously, he too understood the important role of architecture in our town, and I presume he respected what Henry Curtis did for our city. I'm left to wonder if you, as city leaders, will give Henry B. Curtis the same kind, cordial reception, and considerate attention to what is left of his legacy as he did to the people of this community? Or will your legacy be more in line with Joni Mitchell's song, "They Paid Paradise and Put Up a Parking Lot"? And for anybody, I made copies again. You're welcome to pick them up.
I know we usually don't, but should I say something?
Sure.
So, Vicki, I haven't been here for a while, but I appreciate you coming to talk to council.
Oh, they know me. They all know me.
I know they do. I just gotten to meet you and talked on the phone once, I think. But I appreciate you coming to council and talking, because obviously, this is an issue I felt very strongly about as it came up again in recent time. And I know, I just want to take this because I haven't been here, to encourage people to come to those listening sessions and to contact your council people and to contact the mayor's office. But it is also stimulated discussion about renaming areas of the city, like maybe the public square, naming that Curtis Square. So there are other things, other discussions are coming up now amongst city officials to deal with some of these issues. I know there are various reasons, but the stuff behind the City Hall did not get torn down this year. We don't know where that's going to wind up yet, because a large part of it is we don't know where this project is going to wind up. So, but I just want to let you know, I appreciate you coming, and I encourage people to show up to the listening sessions, contact the mayor and their council people, continue to come here and let council know your opinions about things. But I just want to let you know, it is generating additional discussions of trying to recognize some history of Mount Vernon.
Yeah.
Because that is always a balance, and it is very difficult and very expensive, those balances are. But I appreciate it, and actually, council does too. So does the mayor's office. May not seem like it at times, but government is hard to, government is cold and cruel, unfortunately.
It can be.
Except for our police and firemen. That's why people like them more than elected officials. But we're trying, but it's not done yet. But the way to, is to participate in the process, and I appreciate you doing that.
And I have, and I post all of the meetings for everybody to see on my Facebook.
Yeah, I've seen that, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're right, Mr. Miller. I was stopped in Kroger's and to discuss these topics. People do care.
Yeah.
And they should be coming to those meetings that the administration is setting up for them to attend. Next, we have Kurt Hendershed.
Kurt Hendershed, 7771 Ramey Road, Centerburg, Ohio. So thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm with, I'm the president of the Mount Vernon Pickleball Association. I just want to give you an update on fundraising efforts that we did for the project at Riverside Park. And so we raised a touch over $50,000 through some private donations, pledge funds, and some organizations like Knox Community Hospital and Knox Public Health Department. We had a goal of raising somewhere between 100 and 150, which we probably, probably would have happened, but like Knox County Foundation, Park National, and others didn't feel comfortable in allocating funds for a project that's fully funded, but stated they would be if circumstances change. And as I understand it, $420,000 from the Community Development Block grant, as well as $205,000 from the city, has been allocated towards this project. And we can't thank everyone enough for your support. One problem we currently have on certain nights in Memorial Park where we play now, mainly, is there's like, there's four courts there. Sometimes on certain nights, there's like 10 to 15 people waiting, and then, and they get tired of waiting, so they get frustrated, so they leave, you know, which is, you know, really unfortunate. And then the courts are rapidly decaying, a lot of cracks, and it's going to be a little more difficult to play there this year. Really can't host tournaments there anymore, so you can't bring people in from all over Ohio for these tournaments into Mount Vernon. And so with the current 250 or so players we have that I'm, at least that I'm personally aware of, and there's more growth expected, the sport is just exploding every year. The six-court plan at Riverside will definitely accommodate most of the players in the area. And so, but due to all of this, I'm just here to urge everyone to please move forward with the project this year and not delay until 2026 if possible, just because the cost will obviously increase even more and make it more difficult to, you know, have to go back, try to raise more money, potentially. But thanks for your time and very grateful for your support to the project.
Thank you. I apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
No, it's okay.
I've been mispronounced before.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now we move to legislative portion of the meeting. Council, in your packet is the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I assume it's approved by consensus, and we move now to resolutions for third reading, and the first one is resolution number 2025 day 02. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2025 dash 02, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, WPCLF agreement, on behalf of the city of Mount Vernon for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt resolution number 2025 dash 02. Second.
I move to second for the adoption. This resolution, any discussion? Mr. Ruckman?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we were talking about earlier, council at the committee meeting going over this, this is purely for the adoption of the resolution, which is the Water Pollution Control Fund, which is through the Ohio EPA. We do have a compliance schedule with the EPA that we do have to meet and deadlines. I do think that this is definitely a step in the right direction with respect to the fact that it is, it's one step in the journey of actually getting there and being able to solve this problem. And I know, you know, speaking earlier with some council members, Councilman Miller even earlier today, like this is one of the basic functions that we need to do. We need to make sure that we have clean water and we can get rid of the dirty water and, you know, really? You're timing me now? Son of a gun!
That was for him and he let.
Okay. If you say so. If you say so. So anyways, but I think this is a step in the right direction, even if it is just one. And I will say, I have learned through this process that while old things are definitely to be preserved and cherished, the parts and pieces in your wastewater treatment plant probably should not be vintage. So that is, that is something, I believe there was even a story about somebody coming out to work on something, and they were amazed that it was still functional this far past its effective life. So that is the situation, and I urge, urge a vote for. So, thank you.
Can I just say something? You know, I sat on the Utilities Committee for a couple of years when I first came on council. I know that water treatment plant is in need of some updates. I actually made, you know, the recommendation to approve the last time we approved this. My vote is just going to reflect this. It's not based on need. It's, I am still questioning, A, how the scope grew so much in four years, under what authority the scope grew so much in four years, and the fact that we're submitting this with a dedicated source of repayment being on our users when we can't sit here and tell them what that could look like. And I know you said, you know, there's possible other funding. I get that. None of it guaranteed, and it's just tough for me to sit here and look at a $45 million project and what that could do to our rates for folks here. Some quick calculations in my head make that scary. So I realize this is going to pass. Quite frankly, I hope it does because we need it. It's just I have a lot of questions around this.
So, but this doesn't, we don't know what the cost would be to users. Hopefully, it'd be insignificant or very little or none, but it would probably be some, something. But it does all have to come back to council the way that.
I know.
And it's still a concern about all of these projects in one big picture for the city I have. So, yeah. And unfortunately, for whatever reasons, I think politicians like to kick the can down the road, and eventually, somebody's got to deal with stuff. And I think as a city, that's where we're at now. And I'll even say this, I mean, most of that falls on the mayor because he gets to wrap everything because he's the mayor. It's what goes with the chair. I get it. And, but some of that does come back to council, and those are very, very difficult decisions to make. And it's very easy for people to just say, oh, if we get, if this goes, I'm not going to be here next year, so, well, I'm just going to vote this way because then I don't have to deal with it.
Well, it is.
And that's what, I think that's what happens, and that's what has happened. And then the cost of inflation, since this has all gone up, I mean, but no, I understand completely what you're saying. It is a concern because people are concerned what they pay for their water and their sewer prices.
It is just disheartening to me that we could have done at least a good portion of this.
Yeah.
For a whole lot less money.
Yeah. It'd been nice to.
I will say that I have had a lot of conversations with the mayor's office and with Aaron, and that is something I definitely look to the administration to get creative with the finances because.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, it's something. It's, yeah, that's right. Kick the can that way. No, I, I do look for you guys to actually get creative with the finances because it is something we need to do, and there are still questions that need answered and discussions that need to happen, but it is, like I said, definitely a step in the right direction. Only one step, but still a step in the right direction nonetheless.
I think when we first did the water park, and we knew the water park was going to be a money loser, and, but we had to decide what's good for the city and what draws people to the city and what the water park's been successful, and we're glad we did it. But there was controversy on council at that time about should we do something we know is going to lose money? And so we have to decide what's good for the city. We know, we need this. My only suggestion is if we know the increase is coming, that we do a small increase sooner than later, rather than have a big increase later. I like small increases rather than I like big increases. And so if we're going to have to pay for it eventually, let's look at that.
Can I have one more thing? I'm still struggling with the change in scope over four years. I'll leave it at that.
I can answer that. Certain, the original in '21, did you say it was? Yeah. Did not include a lot of the facilities.
Oh, I get that. That's what I mean. I'm questioning why four years ago it was this scope and then.
Phosphorus.
Yeah.
The phosphorus was the, was. It's the driver. The driver.
The EPA man.
It was then too, I think. I went back and listened to, I mean, phosphorus was mentioned back there too. I get it.
I think what you see before you has a lot more facilities upgrades that was not included in the '21 plan.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Is that, Aaron, do you want to come up and speak to that real quick?
Yes. Probably the biggest increase in the scope is the equipment. Because like we were talking to bar screens, they're 15 years old, and that's where the contractor comes out and looks at them and says, 15 years, he's been running nonstop. They don't do that. So they are end of life. Same thing with the bell press upstairs, it's an end of life.
Now we're counting on, you said construction's three years, so 15 years, and now we got to go another three while we construct.
And that's, that's something that keeps me awake at night.
Yeah, I know.
We actually have extra duct tape.
Yeah. Extra strong.
Four or five gallons.
We budgeted for that. Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Oh crap, I forgot I was first. No.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
With six yeses and one no, we, the resolution is adopted. Next, we've got a resolution number 2025 day 09. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025 dash 09, a resolution to approve the Delaware-Knox Marion Morrow Joint Solid Waste Management District's Solid Waste Management Plan, five-year update, and declaring any emergency.
Again, you, Mr. Ruckman.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution number 2025 dash 09.
Second. I move to second for the adoption. This resolution, any discussion? Mr. Ruckman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, as has been said in the resolution, this is Delaware-Knox Marion Morrow Solid Waste Management District. Just to go over some of what that is, for those of you or the public who may not be familiar with it, this is, the district actually allows local management of our solid waste issues, whereas if you don't have a local district, I believe it actually really goes to the Ohio EPA. So this is an element of local control that we have over how we deal with that. That being said, DKMM does actually have to go through and update their plan every five years. We are in that particular juncture at time, and as a result of that, there are a couple of updates that have happened in their plan. I believe the main one with this is the dollar figure that is collected, it's a designation fee and.
Per ton.
Yeah, per ton.
Per ton of waste.
For waste, and that is going from $6 to $7.50 per ton. And that is actually something that goes to benefit a lot of the programs that we've been hearing a lot here recently, drop-off recycling locations, the education program as far as waste reduction is concerned. And I know something that we've actually benefited from as well, some of the, I believe, tire and waste removal is through this as well. So that's what this is, and that's why I'm asking you to pass that this evening.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next, we move to resolutions for second reading. The first one is resolution number 2025 day 17. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025 dash 17, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Mansfield Avenue Side Path Project, KNO-CR5-0.47PID115280, and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Severns?
We will give this a second reading.
This resolution receives a second reading. Next, it's resolution number 2025 dash 18. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025 dash 18, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and award a qualification-based selection of construction inspection and related engineering services during construction of the Mansfield Avenue Side Path Project, KNO-CR5-0.47PID115280, and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Severns?
Yes, we'll give this a second reading, and I just, I think maybe the next meeting, we ought to just have a five-minute committee meeting to make sure we're on board with this. I'm assuming engineer will be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to resolutions for first reading, and that resolution is resolution number 2025 day 20. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025 dash 20, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director of the city of Mount Vernon to grant an easement to the Knox County Memorial Building for a sign and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Severns?
We'll give this a first reading tonight.
This resolution receives its first reading. Now I move to resolution number 2025 day 21. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025 dash 21, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to dispose of vehicles in the Police Department and not needed for public use by the city of Mount Vernon and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take resolution number 2025 dash 21 to its third and final reading.
Second.
I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville?
I move to adopt resolution number 2025 dash 21.
Second.
I move to second for the adoption. This resolution, any discussion? Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. We have six vehicles here. Do you want to talk about them, Tanner?
Sure don't.
You don't want to say how nice they are to come kick the tires?
I definitely don't want to say that.
Vintage vehicles.
Yeah, they are vintage, yes.
Yes.
Now, just clearing out the impound lot, you can find these on GovDeals.
Well, you will be able to once council approves it.
As soon as, yeah, as soon as council approves this, you will be able to find these on GovDeals.
Any other, any other question? Any other discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2025 dash 22. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025 dash 22, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the city of Mount Vernon, Ohio to acquire by any means authorized by RC735.05 equipment for the Public Works Department and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take resolution number 2025 dash 22 to its third and final reading.
Second.
I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville?
I move to adopt resolution number 2025 dash 22.
Second.
I have a question.
I just want the record to reflect that Tammy Woods allowed me to get this thing by any means necessary.
That's the question. That's the question.
It says authorized right there.
All right. Well, I choose not to see the authorized.
I didn't even get to talk.
It goes to Mrs. Seville first. You can ask Mrs. Seville the question. Mrs. Seville?
Well, we're talking about a hydro spade trailer for stormwater pipe jetting and cleaning is pretty exciting.
Yeah, sure is. All right, go ahead.
Does that mean like we could trade somebody for this item, like by, by any means?
No, we have one identified.
Oh, okay.
We can either, A, you know, go out and purchase it, and this way, it's on state bid.
Yeah.
By, that's one of the means authorized by RC735.05.
Yeah, it's not by any means necessary. It's by any means by revised code. So you stick within that, we'll be gold.
I like that second sentence, Danny.
Any other questions?
So, just to be clear, so the Utilities Department has a more robust version of one of these things that, right now, Public Works has to borrow essentially. This is a more pared down, I think we talked about this maybe in the budget cycle, yeah. So we, this is a more pared down version that's more mobile and that they can take with them to clear out laterals, and that'll allow us to, you know, do a lot more of these projects, so.
Has anybody else got a good question?
Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2025 dash 23. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025 dash 23, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to seal, to sell by sealed bid or dispose of vehicles in the Public Works Department not needed for public use by the city of Mount Vernon and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take resolution number 2025 dash 23 to its third and final reading.
Second.
I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville?
I move to adopt resolution number 2025 dash 23.
Second.
I move to second for adoption. This resolution, any discussion? Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. Well, now we've got some really nice vehicles here, some trucks we're going to sell.
Yep. These are, according to our Public Works Director, no longer needed in the Public, Public Works Department, so we're going to be transitioning those, and you can find those on GovDeals.
Any questions?
Oh, they're low mileage.
It is, I noticed that.
Well, it's actually high if you consider the time they're sitting there.
Correct. It's all sitting.
Good thing we don't have hours on the engine.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2025 day 24. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025 dash 24, a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointment of Sibley Pollan to the Historical Review Commission for a five-year term and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution 2025 dash 24 to its third and final reading.[1483.76]
Second.
And move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods?
Move to adopt resolution 2025-24.
Second.
And move to second for adoption. This resolution and a discussion. Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. Madam Chair and Counsel, Sibley Pollan is a stranger to the City of Mount Vernon. She's one of our outstanding volunteers. She helps out in numerous ways. She's also the president of the Knox County Board of Realtors and is anxious to continue in her role at, with the Historical Review Commission, and she does in fact live in a historical district. Any other questions? Which is required. Which? Yeah, one of them, and she is the one who lives in the historical district.
Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2025-25. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025-25, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to pay bills pursuant to section 5705.41D, then announce certification.
Mrs. Seville?
I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take resolution number 2025-25 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville?
I move to adopt resolution number 2025-25.
Second.
And move to second for adoption. This resolution and a discussion. Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. So now we've got some then and now.
We do have some then and nows, and I keep promising you that we're gonna get less of these, and I'm still promising you that. I think that's gonna happen. So again, a then and now is when an invoice is received before a purchase order is placed, basically encumbering the amount of money that we owe, and that's basically saying, okay, we owe this person, but do we have the money yet? Yes, we do have the money, and yes, it has been properly appropriated in all five of these instances. We just need to still work out the details, more education, more streamlining, more efficiency in the Auditor's Department, and then we will see less of this. And when you do see this, hopefully in the future, then you'll, should ask a few more questions, but these are basically just errors in how this was presented as far as paying bills.
So, if I may, because I looked into these, can I give some context to these? All right. So, number one and number two, U.S. Bancor Equipment Finance and to Aaron Oakley and number two, these POs existed into '24 and into '25. Number one exists in my office and number two, that 101-2500 is public buildings and lands. Those were POs that were in place. We were working with the Auditor's Office and we were trying not to override any encumbrance, or sorry, appropriations as we transitioned into the budget. And as those were, those POs were closing out, we waited, and then we started overriding some of the appropriations, and that's why we needed more appropriations, and that's what turned these into POs, if that makes, new POs, if that makes any sense.
So you closed POs and should know kind of?
They did close POs out. So there was, I think, Green, I'm looking at you, there's about $3,500 on one of, on the Bancor, and I think there was about a thousand or so on the Aaron Oakley that's custom wired. That's what that was. That explains those two. So those, those are recurring things. We work with custom wired on a lot of things. Our copier, obviously we have a copier contract, a blanket PO that stays open for those. OpenGov is the system that our Public Works and Public Utilities system is switching to, to, it's like an asset management system. This one's pretty simple. We, in the new budget, created several contract services lines that didn't exist, so we couldn't encumber money in a line that didn't exist. So we got the, we got the invoice, and I think we got the invoice. So we paid early on for the implementation of the, for the system, and then we, we did indeed receive the invoice for the new service agreement much earlier than we had anticipated, but even if we got it on a, you know, more routine schedule, those contract service lines, which I think you can see a couple of those in the 101 and the 201 and 204, they just simply didn't exist, so we had to wait for those to be created and appropriated. And then finally, as we had talked about in the budget cycle, the Auditor's Office was creating a lot of POs under our former auditor. That includes the humane officer. So you see four and five, that's essentially the same thing. So we pay a portion to the humane officer and we pay another portion to the animal shelter. We actually, in our office, we created this PO thinking, hey, we're gonna get out ahead of this. Little did we know, the invoice was sitting down in the Auditor's Office. So, because that is where, you know, traditionally for years, that's where that invoice had been sent. So. What's that? Now it's coming to me. A lot of these things are coming to my office, so you might see a few more of these. It's just kind of a, you know, we had been doing it this way for X amount of years, and now we frankly don't know when to expect some of these things. So I've been, especially with the county, have been kind of communicating with, you know, when can I expect these, make sure that they're coming to me, you know, just changing the attention to for several of these things. So you get a little bit more context. I think that that, you know, explains why. And we've jumped out ahead of like the airport, the, even the Cozine Gap Trail, we jumped out ahead of the ADF. Just wanna make sure that CAT, several things that before we get an invoice, we wanna make sure that these things are encumbered, and I think most of those were being handled in the Auditor's Office in the past, so.
Health District?
I received an email that has asked that how many of these now and then are there before October 2024? And how many are there since you have taken over financing?
I have not taken over financing.
I'm just, this is the email I got.
Yeah.
That has asked for those answers.
Yeah.
So.
That I don't know. I don't, I don't know exactly how many were, were done before. That would be in legislation before October.
Okay, well, we need to look up how pre-October 2024, now and then, till now, we'll have to look up all of that.
I think you're also not going to get, from what we have seen, you're also not going to get an accurate picture of what was happening there, so.
Yeah, this is.
Yep, that's fine.
I mean, this is, I gotta answer.
Yeah, she needs to respond to.
I gotta respond.
Yeah. Seven. I don't know.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2025-26. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025-26, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for construction of a salt barn at 1700 Old Delaware Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns?
We will give this a first reading.
This resolution receives its first reading. We move now to resolution number 2025-27. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025-27, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the 2025 street resurfacing and curb and gutter restoration projects and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns?
We'll give this a first reading as well.
Resolution receives its first reading. We now move to resolution number 2025-28. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2025-28, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio to purchase an ambulance for the fire department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayhem?
Sir, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings, take resolution 2025-28 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
The rule is suspended.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution number 2025-28.
Second.
And move to second for adoption. This resolution and a discussion. Mr. Mayhem?
Counsel, you, we had a quick committee meeting on this, you know, as part of the, it's been budgeted for and it's part of the, the regular rotation of vehicles that, that rotate in and out. Any additional questions?
Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, and that concludes our resolutions. We now move to ordinances. First ordinance is ordinance number 2025-01. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2025-01, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of parcels number 66-05624.000, 66-05627.000, 66-05628.000, and 66-05629.000 from R1A Core Residential District to R3 Attached Residential District.
Mrs. Keener?
Thank you, Mr. President. Forgive me, I'm not sure how to word this, but I'm gonna move to send this ordinance back to.
To return it to municipal planning for further determination.
So, I'm going to move to send ordinance 2025-01 back to municipal planning in order for them to give us either a positive or negative on it.
Second. And move to second to amend this ordinance.
Remand?
No, remand.
What's that?
We're effectively remanding it to municipal planning.
Remand.
We're not.
So we're not amending it, we're remanding it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion on the remanding of this to municipal planning?
I think we talked about this at length over the last three council meetings, and we will be canceling, if this moves forward to send back, we'll be canceling our public hearing that was scheduled for February 24th. That's all.
You need us to officially cancel that or?
Well, if that were to occur, then another, another notice would go out announcing the cancellation of that.
You wanna put that as part of the, of the motion to cancel that?
Well, once, once you remand it, there's no purpose for them.
I know. But does he need authority to, to postpone it?
I mean, I just think it, it will die as a matter of, as an operation of the motion itself.
Okay. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
No.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
My vote is six to one. This, this change to this ordinance to remand it to municipal planning is approved. Now I move to ordinances for second reading. The first one is ordinance number 2025-03. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2025-03, an ordinance to affirm the decision of the Municipal Planning Commission to not vacate a platted alley north of Kirk Street between East Street and South McKenzie Street in the City of Mount Vernon, Knox County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener?
So we're going to give this its second reading. Do we have a public hearing already scheduled for this?
Well, then we need to schedule one.
For an, we've never scheduled public hearings for alley vacations.
Oh, we haven't? Okay, then we're good. Then we'll give it a committee meeting.
Yeah, can we do a committee meeting of 10 minutes? Thank you, Mr. President.
This ordinance receives a second reading. Now I move to ordinance number 2025-04. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2025-04, an ordinance establishing compensation benefits and terms of employment for the city inspector and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. We'll give this its second reading.
This ordinance receives a second reading. Now move to ordinance number 2025-05. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2025-05, an ordinance establishing a compensation benefits and terms of employment for the communications director and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
We'll give this its second reading.
This ordinance receives a second reading. Now we move to ordinance number 2025-06. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance amending compensation pay grades for certain supervisory and professional personnel and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
We'll give this its second reading.
This ordinance receives a second reading. Now I move to ordinances for first reading. The first one is ordinance number 2025-07. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2025-07, an ordinance setting pay ranges for temporary, seasonal, and college-level internship employees and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
We'll give this its first reading, and then can I just have a five-minute committee meeting? We'll kind of clean up a couple of questions.
All right. That ordinance receives its first reading, and now that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move to remarks of administration. Mayor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. President, and counsel went pretty extensive into the update for you, so I'm not gonna repeat any of those things. I just wanted to thank Mr. Mayville for his service of serving as our auditor, and you've done a great job. I appreciate your, your hard work digging in and finding solutions to, to create systems that are going to be lasting. And with that, I also want to welcome Dan Brinkman, who we will be swearing in Friday at noon in council chambers as our interim auditor. That is all, sir.
Mr. Sowers?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Sowers?
I'll echo Mayor Starr's comments. I've worked with Paul out now for four months and appreciate his efforts and, and working with him and trying to right that ship, and look forward to working with Dan. Thank you.
Do either interim auditor or potential future interim monitor, Mr. Mayville and Mr. Brinkman, have anything to say to council?
Nothing, thank you. Not, not today.
Mr. Brawn?
I also want to thank Mr. Mayville for his service to the city, and welcome aboard, Mr. Brinkman.
Thank you. Mr. Millar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayville, for stepping in to some stuff to help definitely, I think, righten the ship, and it's, I think you set a good course, so appreciate that.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I also want to act of those sentiments. Thank you, Mr. Mayville, and welcome, Dan. It's good to have you onboard. So I also wanted to thank the mayor's office for setting up some meetings for projects within the second ward. We had a really good discussion earlier, and the mayor was very, he hasn't thrown me out yet, so, but as much as I peer around the office, I'm waiting for it. Yeah, it's close, it's close, I can feel it. But anyways, just wanna thank you for taking the time to talk to me about that, and I appreciate actually clearing time on the schedule to set up regular meetings about second ward issues and projects we can tackle. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Severns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayville. Welcome, Mr. Brinkman.
Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. Nice working with you, Paul. Just sorry it's been a short time, but I've enjoyed it. Look forward to working with you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Keener?
I won't repeat everything that everybody has said so far. I would like to mention that we are having a joint meeting between the Mount Vernon City Council, County Commissioners, and Regional Planning Commission on February 17th at the station break that begins at 6 o'clock. We will be covering together Knox and the work that that organization or that group has been doing for the comprehensive plan that is regularly done for the county. But I did want to talk a little bit about a meeting that the, that the city had this week with the CBB board members about continuing the Visitors Bureau's presence in the CANC. The CBB would like to continue to maintain that visitor center at the CANC, but there are issues that really complicate this. The CANC is part of a contingency plan that should our law office need to relocate, it would be that facility. And due to this, the city would like to present a one-year lease to the CBB, who has been in that building for four years. The city wishes to rent a portion of this facility, and the question remains of staffing for a rental element. The city would also like the Recreation Director to maintain an office in that building. These two entities work towards very different goals for the city. Another major factor was the request for consultation on marketing, graphic design, and overall public relations from individuals in the organization. The specific scope and cost of these services were not finalized during this meeting, and it will require further discussion. Having covered this, I would like to ask, we have a lot of buildings. Does the Area Development Foundation have a lease for their building?
Nope. Not currently.
Also, why would an outside entity be tasked with rebranding and such when we have just looked at creating a communications director? And also, have we not received significant funds from important partners in order to utilize this space as a visitor center? So I think that we need to maintain the trust of our valuable partners, but if we make partnerships untenable, the entire community will lose. On the Parks Master Plan, the city chose the CANC building as a welcome center because it is the hub of our park system. And if we fail to see the value in that alone, I expect there will need to be additional conversations surrounding the future of the CBB occupying that space. I would urge the city to think of the bigger picture and think of what can really be accomplished if we can work together with other groups. Thank you, Mr. President.
Can I maybe for it to have this discussion? Todd, can we have like a 15, 20 minute committee meeting at the next council meeting for this?
Of which committee? Parks?
Parks Committee to discuss this.
Okay.
And Mrs. Keener, just so we do our homework, what's the website we should review before we have that meeting next Monday?
So if you're looking for what the Visitors Bureau has contributed to the city, I can send out their annual impact report from 2024. It is true that the Visitors Bureau works for the entire county as a whole, but we are the county seat, and I think it is important to note the work that they do. The visitors generate about $19.6 million into local, state, and federal tax. There were 10.1 million unique visits to Knox County in 2024. I think that this type of information is important to consider when we're looking at creating a lease with an organization, especially when there are other facilities being occupied without leases.
I was referring mainly to the meeting next Monday.
Oh, next Monday?
Yeah.
Oh, that.
We're better prepared for that. What homework should we do to?
Togetherknox.org or something?
Yeah, it's, hold on, I don't have that one pulled up. Mayor, do you know that right off the top of your?
They can pull it.
Oh, it is togetherknox.org. That still has the draft up and all of the workshop presentations and the path that we will take towards adoption.
I would recommend council review that before next Monday, so we know what we're talking about when we get a meeting with commissioners and others. Thank you. Mrs. Woods?
Mr. Mayville, I also want to thank you, like the others have, but specifically for your work on getting the Auditor's Office staffed at the levels it's currently staffed at. I'm sure Mr. Brinkman will find that very helpful as he takes on the office. So thank you again for all your hard work, and welcome aboard.
Just so the public's aware, the mayor can appoint an auditor in an interim until the Republican Central Committee representatives from Mount Vernon meet. That has to be within like five to 30 days.
Five to 45.
Five to 45 days. They, they need to meet to officially appoint a person to that position so the, so the community knows where we are with the city auditor interim. And this will be an interim position, and whoever is in that position will be up for reelection in, in November. Mr. Mayhem?
Thank you, sir. I wanna offer congratulations to the police officers who were recognized at the wards banquet, and just appreciate the, the work of our police in general. And we heard about the Citizens Police Academy. I do hope that, well, I guess Mr. Brawn's gonna take away your fun, Mal, and you won't be able to get taste. I do encourage you.
won't be able to get taste, I do encourage you to sign up for the, the police academy. Citizens Police Academy, I think that's great for the, just citizens to know what the, more about how that office works, that it's a great opportunity. Also, Mr. Sawyers, I told you I was going to ask for an update on the police station. Do you have something you can give us in 30 seconds, or do I need to wait for the next council meeting on that?
So the public comment periods, there will always be a 30-day public comment window after the very last meeting of the, or listening session of the listening tour for each section. So I think this one goes until February 23rd. So after that, and then of course, the online survey is open. But after that, what we plan to do with each section is take all of the information that we've gathered, and we do have somebody that's, you know, typing up notes in each one of those sections, and we're going to basically combine all of the comments and, you know, from both the online survey and the, the public comments and the notes that were gathered at those events, and basically, you know, create a document that we can distribute both to council and to put it online and to anybody. So do I have a formal statement of what happened? No, but the comment period's still open, so, yep.
Just so the public aware, is aware of these listening tours. We have completed the listening tours for the, for the police department, but they can still add comments.
Yes.
And refresh us on when the listening tours are for the annex.
So we already completed one. I think there's another one on the 20th, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and then there's one on the 28th.
Friday the 28th.
Yes, yeah. So February got wonky because of Valentine's Day, I'm going to be totally honest about that one, because love you, Mount Vernon, but I love my, you know, life more, I guess. But...
One on the 28th, by the way, is in the morning at 9 o'clock, Happy Bean.
Right, yeah, so...
It's a morning bean, yeah.
Yes, so that one, that one's at, the 28th is at Happy Bean from 9:00 to 10:30. And the reason we've moved them around to make people, you know, kind of accommodate schedules, and if you don't want to come to a government facility, then you can come somewhere else. So, and then, of course, we've got the online, online survey, and then while you're at the listening tour, there is a paper form, so if you don't want to say anything out loud, you can write it down and submit it, drop it off, mail it in, whatever you want to do.
For the public's benefit, where do they find the online survey?
The on, we've posted it numerous times. I know Knox Pages has ran it several times. I know the Mount Vernon News posted the HTML link in the newspaper, so good luck.
They're pulling it up here, so...
Yeah, so you can type that in if you want, but, and I'm not sure if it's on the website or not, but...
It is under...
Okay.
Press.
Yeah, anyway, so we've got, have it in several mediums, so it's a Survey Monkey, so link, just go on there and fill that out. But yeah, we're going to, so February is about the City Hall Annex slash Service Center, so because we've got several distributed models or downtown models, and then March will be about the Justice Center or courthouse. Again, February and March get a little funky because of, it's again, like a decision tree, if we go here, or do we go here, whatnot, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, one final thing, the, I mentioned in public comments, I got a question about parking downtown. Thank you, counsel, who responded. We had a little email discussion, and actually, Mr. Ruckman brought that up at Experience, Mount Vernon, and the general consensus was, feel like that from the, the business owners